Eighty to fifty-eight percent, that was the same as last year. Federal aid was the same also. Out of this pie, one hundred percent pie, taxes make up eighteen percent. That's a pretty good bargain. As I mentioned earlier, state aid makes up the difference when the taxes don't equal the amount of budget per pupil. Although this is all funds, so this does include the facilities waiting on the new facilities.
And I understand you're right, that the taxes now are considered as state aid?
That will begin in two thousand fifteen, Mark. Well, in the year we're in currently. Yes, that's correct.
And that's just for the general fund's tax levy?
We're looking now, again, at a comparison of revenues. This is all funds, and again, as Mark pointed out, we have excluded transfers between the funds. We've also excluded the bond proceeds. The largest category is the state aid, as we saw in the pie chart, the blue part of this bar chart, red being the taxes. Federal aid is the green bar, which I pointed out, when we had economic recovery funds coming through, it grew, although they were really state funds, if the state included. So there's a bit of blurring here between state aid and federal aid in years two thousand ten and eleven. Interest in others, the yellow, healthcare premiums. You can see the growth over the years there. We've all experienced that. And then the smallest piece is this bit of light of blue representing fees. A couple of things in the financial statement. On statement one, I believe that's page four of the financial statement, the total of all the district funds is fifteen point five million. That's a decrease of one hundred eighty-nine thousand. So the district's been successful in overall maintaining those balances. However, that's a fairly slim margin, because those balances represent only thirty-three days of average expenditures. So that's about as slim as you can cut it, when the school district is now on a month-long operating cycle. In other words, the revenues come from the state on a monthly basis, so you pretty much need to manage your funds carefully. What this doesn't show is some of the funds that decreased, that we'll need to be watching here as we go into the future, including the food service decrease by two hundred and seven thousand, capital outlay, pardon me, decreased by three hundred and seventy-three thousand. And I believe the healthcare fund also decreased. Yes, receipts and healthcare reserve went up four hundred and one thousand, but premiums went up six hundred and ninety-two thousand. So that's an area to pay particular attention to, because the expense tends to increase higher than the consumer price index. The total of the general fund, which in essence, the general fund really belongs to the state, because they simply make up the difference between what is needed on a monthly basis and the amount needed based on the budget per pupil is paid through there. But most of that was a local auction budget. The general fund increased only about thirteen thousand. Local auction budget increased a hundred and one thousand. And that, again, is where districts across the state have had to go to make up much of the pressure put on them, because the budget per pupil has remained even. Meanwhile, costs have increased. So here in U.S. four-five-seven, that local option budget had made up about fifty percent of the increase, if you look at the inflation alone. So it made up about twelve million of the twenty-four million total inflation gap at Gloria mentioned debt service, and the debt outstanding at the end of two thousand fourteen was about ninety-six point eight million. That's a decrease of one million dollars in principal since last year. Those bonds were scheduled to pay out in the year two thousand thirty-five. Now, the employee compensated absences is the only other debt under this basis of financial statement presentation that the district has. Compensated absences would be the vacation and discretionary leave. So as those are earned, it's recognized, oh, pardon me, it's not recognized when it's earned, it's recognized as it's paid out.
Wouldn't that be under payroll, then? Payroll expense versus, I guess it's-
Yes.
-in the interim, it's considered debt?
Yes.
Between the time it's accrued and the time it's collected?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. This is the amount that's unpaid.
Okay.
The amount, as it's paid, it's recognized, and you're absolutely correct, it would be in payroll.
Okay.
And to point out some more details on that, if you want to make a footnote, footnote four C on page twelve has got the district's policy. This did increase about eight-one thousand since last year. Okay, we're going to take a look now at some comparisons. There are fifteen districts here, including Garden City, and they are in place from left to right based on their FTE. And this is actual FTE, not weighted. So Garden City has, in the year two thousand fourteen, seven thousand, about seventy-one hundred, ranking twelfth in this group. Now, the bars represent the total levy for each of these districts, and we'll look at another bar chart that'll show how that's stacked. Garden City is second out of these fifteen. The lowest is Geary County, which includes the military, which is quite a boost for them in that district, in terms of both funding and also the FTE. This is a stacked bar chart on those levies. Now, as I mentioned, general fund, twenty mils, everyone has the same general fund levy. The red represents the bond and interest. That is probably the one particular category of tax levy that varies the most from district to district. As far as how Garden City compares, Garden City has nine point seven-five mils here in this bond and interest levy. And the local option budget that I mentioned makes up the difference. So many districts are relying on it to make up the difference, that the budget per pupil in the general fund does not provide. That one is difficult to measure here, so we'll take a look at another chart for it. But Garden City, in this case, is at eighteen point eight mils. And the next chart that will look like, oh, by the way, blue represents capital outlay for most districts, that's the only other levy. So we'll take a look now at local option budget, and that's controlled by percentage of the expenditure of the general fund. So the board sets that limit. Garden City, you'll notice, here at twenty-two point three mils, is, again, second from the lowest, Geary County having the lowest at twenty-one point seven. The other districts are mostly at the thirty mil levy, with the exception of Manhattan at twenty-seven point six. Now, this is fiscal year two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fifteen, the district budget went to twenty-seven percent, so it'd be up here, close to where Manhattan is. And again, I think that this is where most of the districts are making up the shortfall in the general fund budget per pupil. It's the emphasis, the responsibility has been shifted for that funding of public education from the state to the local districts. So this percentage, this local option budget levy, is a measure of how much the school district is depending upon local funds for its financing. Garden City's been able to hold it fairly low, but as those pressures increase, you're going to have to face reality and push it up. And I think that's what you're experiencing now. There have been cuts made in positions, watching costs very closely, but you burn the candle at both ends, and in the end, as the board, of course, you're looking out for the number one priority of being the education of children. And so as those pressures mount, you've got to make these hard decisions. Just a couple more graphs. One measure that you often see in press is the taxes paid on a hundred thousand dollar call. And so what we've done is ranked these from left to right, lowest to highest, and Garden City, again, as we saw the relationship earlier, is second from the lowest, Geary County being the lowest. Garden City's amount is five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, Geary County's four hundred and eighty-three. Now, at the top end, when you reach Johnson County, these two districts have got eight hundred and seventy-four, and I don't have Gardeners exactly, but it was just slightly Another measure is taxes levy per full-time equivalent, unweighted. So this is how many dollars are levy for each of the full-time students. Garden City is at two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's the fourth lowest in this group. You'll notice Geary County, again, is at the low end, and then Dodge City is slightly lower, and then Hayesville is a bit lower also. Yes, Mark?
How does, now, an FTE goes one point five for certain students, and Garden City's a little heavier on some of those students.
Yes.
So might that factor into why we would be lowering the level of those here?
Yes, absolutely. Because what happens is, when we talk weighted FTE, Garden City tends to be higher, and a higher proportion then of funding comes from the state aid. Any other questions, thoughts? I'll mention a couple remarks here on the audit report. This, the audit report was an unmodified report on the regulatory basis. There were no material weaknesses in internal control and no material question costs on federal programs. So this is the highest level of report on the regulatory basis. Now, before we move into management letter, I'll pull all this together. We talked about several themes, the outside pressure, the budget per pupil, and inflation. We saw how the budget per pupil across all funds has remained relatively steady. We've seen how the enrollment, the FTE, has increased over the years, fairly steady, although it's leveled off the last couple of years. And that the funding for that, the budget per pupil, has not kept up with inflation. So what the district has found itself is in a position of making cuts, of course, gradually increasing the local option budget. And in terms of cutting costs, a couple of thoughts there. For two thousand fourteen, the new facilities waiting amounted to five hundred and two students, five hundred and two FTE. That'll go away in two thousand fifteen, the year we're in currently. That will represent a decrease of one point eight million. The general fund, the local option budget, excuse me, went to, or showed an increase of three point three million, which is about that twenty-seven percent going forward for two thousand fifteen. So in two thousand fifteen, the reason for that increase, you can see, is directly tied to that loss of weighted facilities. Cost cutting for the two thousand fifteen program budgeting exercise cut six hundred thousand dollars, looked like it was mostly in books and supplies, but that also puts then more pressure upon booster clubs and the individual students, pardon me, the individual teachers in the classroom in order to provide the education for the students. And I can speak firsthand of that one. PTOs have been stepping up, but there's, I know everyone tries to be very creative, but within the parameters that you have to work, that is certainly limited. So I don't think I've really given you any answers tonight, but probably, hopefully, explain a bit of the dilemma to you, so that as you go forward in making the decisions, you might be able to reflect on some of these issues.
Thanks. So you wrapped up the state of the state and the state of the district in your address tonight.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, thank you.
Teresa has a management letter coming with that, so I'll let her take over.
I'm lucky this year, because the management letter is just pretty brief. The cover letter defines what, a significant deficiency in your controls and operations far, and when those rise to the level of what we call material weakness. But we're very happy to report that district has no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And the comments that are attached are very insignificant. We just point them out to you because they do deal with Kansas statutes. They're not noted in the financial statements, because they're not material, they're very immaterial. One of them dealt with the fact that there's twenty-four outstanding checks in the district that are over twenty-four months old, and statute says after twenty-four months, you can look at reinstating those to your original funds, or turn them over to the state as untold property. So it's just a reminder to put that on the to-do list every year, and take care of those items. We also note that this year, there was only one fund that had a deficit cash balance. That's permissible in this fund, because it was a grant fund, and you guys have to spend the money before you can get reimbursed for it. So that's not unusual. And then finally, the last item dealt with the remittance to the state for the bond principal and interest. They're monitoring those due dates now, and like to have their money in a minimum of twenty days before they are required to pay out to the bondholders. Well, you've got the money in and time to meet the payments to the bondholders, but in the state's interpretation of time, it may be five to twenty days. I think they've got a method in place to monitor that, so that goes out a little more timely in the future. And then we just note a half dozen, three items maybe, really, that were resolved in the prior year. So the district's doing a great job, they've got good controls in place, the business office staff and everybody does an excellent job trying to make sure that they're adhered into those controls, so the district doesn't have problems. Thank you. So that was the short letter. Lisa, Lisa Ashburn, the supervisor on the audit, and she's going to lead the last letter we give of the late-year one that's our letter to the governing body.
The letter of the governing body covers information that's required to be communicated to you as part of the audit. The first section of the letter goes over our responsibilities as auditors, which is to express an opinion on the financial statements, plan to perform an audit in a planned timeframe, and communicate to you any significant matters that were identified during the course of the audit. The next section of the letter goes over the district's significant accounting practices. The first one being your accounting policies, which were discussed in note one in your financial statements. Your accounting estimates, with the most sensitive estimate being your estimate on accounts payable and outstanding encumbrances. And then finally, your financial statement disclosures, with the most sensitive disclosure being your compliance with Kansas statutes. The letter then goes on to state that there were no instances of fraud identified during the course of the audit, and there were no disagreements in dealing with management. Professional standards also requires us to communicate to you all corrected and uncorrected misstatements, and you'll find those attached to the back of that letter. Also attached to the back of that letter is a signed client representation letter. And then on occasion, management might consult other accountants regarding auditing and accounting matters. Into our knowledge, no such consultations took place. And then finally, on occasion, management, or during the course of our professional relationship, we do discuss a variety of matters, and none of these matters led to our attention as auditors.
If there are any questions, we're happy to entertain them at this point. And if there are none, as you're thinking about it, let me make a point that Teresa touched on, and that is that the district is very receptive to comments about improvements in internal control. KJ Curry, that culture on from Kathleen's tenure with the business department. We appreciate that, it's a sign of the profession and the organization. And we also appreciate hospitality we receive in spite of the difficulties we sometimes cause with interruptions and distractions during the entire course of the audit. Are there any questions?
I'd like to compliment you, Gary, and your diligence with this audit, and I appreciate your, I don't know how to say it, your number line on how you dive into these things, because so much of it makes no sense to me. So I appreciate, I appreciate where you're coming from. And I appreciate the kind words that you expressed towards KJ. We're going to miss you a lot. And you've had a huge learning curve in a very short period of time, and you've done so well with it, and you've done, put in so much time to make sure that there wasn't a lag in this very important part of our district, and we're going to miss you. Thank you for your work with us.
We have to put our own seat with questions?
We will, we're going to have very little time to do that.
I will say here, this is a tremendous amount of information.
Yeah.
So as you are digesting this, if you come up with other questions after the meeting, if you will send them to me or Dr. Ada, then we'll be happy to get that answer and get that information back to the board. It's a pretty monumental task, and KJ, I'd like to echo what it worries, that it's been a pleasure working with you, and we really are going to miss you.
We're red for just anybody. We're going to take our Christmas picture after this. We could best one after, I mean, our holiday picture, sorry. No, I'm not.
Are you on the other side?
Any other questions for the auditing team?
Could I ask just one?
Sure.
On one of your slides, you had an uncovered cash statement, the total of all district funds, like fifteen point four million dollars. Now, does that include carryover amounts, or is that-
Yes, that would be a snapshot of the balances uncovered, but is unspoken for at the end of this year.
So anything that, for instance, was in the budget on a particular program area, it would be within that? Because the year ended, we're auditing it, it was encumbered under a program, but now it goes unspent, so it's considered part of this? Or do those funds show up under this number?
If there had been a PO issue for an item, a budgeted item, or any item, that amount would have been removed from cash, basically saying, we might have had twenty million cash in the year, but we have five million of POs outstanding waiting to be invoiced in cash. So we have fifteen million of free cash. Does that make sense?
Yes. It just, in the relative sense, and I think Gary had made the comment, that that's a fairly small number for our elbow, and I just wanted to be sure that there wasn't more to the story, and it sounds like this is in necessarily.
And keep in mind also, this includes funds such as the bond and debt reserve. So those debt service payments remain for six months, so there's got to be cash building out, so that it's available when these payments are paid out.
All right, is there any further slottings we need to discuss this time?
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda then. I'm personally moved that we approved the consent agenda after these amendments. Pushing on more. Second by Jean, any discussion? All those in favor, signal fingers in the air. A curriculum report, they, you're up. Elementary grade cards are the topic.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you this evening a little bit about the first grade report card. After the first recording system this semester, we had some concerns from parents about the first grade report card. The concerns mainly dealt with the fact that we didn't show a letter grade on there, and that it appeared that we had a pass/fail system. So just to give you a little bit of background, board goal five point one about getting those for students and reporting to parents. Anyway, you guys approved that last spring, and we pulled that first grade grid together again, added a few members to that, to look at our report card, because there was a big mismatch between the exit criteria that we had created and what the grade card said. So if you take a look at the grade card that says second grade report card, this is what the first grade report card looked like last year. If you look at that, there's a place for the, it's this diagnostic reading assessment, and down at the very bottom, it shows you three grades, one is communication, one is math, and one is science. And this is the one that says second grade at the top of it. But you can see that it just shows you a letter grade, and it gives you a DRA score. That basically all it saves you. And the conversation with teachers last summer was, you know, grades- And the conversation with teachers last summer was, you know, grades are very subjective. And they said, this really doesn't match what we're wanting parents to know about the skills that we've identified as being essential for those students going on to second grade. So when they started talking about that, the conversation was pretty deep. They talked about, you know, when you look at grades, we had, we had a teacher talk about, they had an awards assembly, and two first grade classes going to the awards assembly. One first grade class, all of the students were on the A honor roll. They all made As. Well, in the second class, only half of them were on the A honor roll. And that was simply because the grading between the teachers was very different. One teacher was grading on differentiation. She was differentiating her grades. The other teacher was not. It depends on the amount of grades that you take in a semester, what kind of extra credit you give. So the teachers were very much wanting this to be more of a standards-based reporting system that talked about the exit criteria. So if you turn that over on the back, here's what the grade card looks like this year. And you can see with the math, it will tell you exactly, it matches up with that exit criteria. It tells you what the skills are. And I can see where the parents would say this might be a pass/fail. Take, for instance, well, let's look at the next one. First grade report card information. Here's how they're grading. Take a look at that one. Number three on English Language Arts is the DRA. DRA measures fluency and comprehension. As you, as they start looking at that fluency and comprehension, they measure that against some certain criteria. So they would be able to tell a parent, here's the score that your student has for DRA. But they could also say, here's what their fluency looks like, here's what their comprehension looks like. They could take them through a running record. They can tell them how the student is, what miscues the student is making to be able to receive that score. So I can see how they would look at it as pass/fail, because if you see, it's separated into four sections, first nine weeks, second nine weeks, third nine weeks, and fourth nine weeks. First nine weeks on the DRA, the student would pass it with a three, would not pass it with a two. The three would give you some very important information about fluency and comprehension that the teacher could explain to the parents. Now, if you look at second nine weeks, that score goes up. The expectations get a little higher. The student will have to score an eight to be able to pass it. Third nine weeks, we don't get that assessment. That's why there's an X there. And in the fourth nine weeks, they're going to have to be able to get a 16 to pass on to that. Now, in places where they could put a numerical value, the numerical value will be there. But everything that's listed here, there is an assessment for, and there is, the teacher will be able to explain to the parent what that, what that criteria is. So it appears to be a pass/fail, but in reality, it's measured against certain criteria. So I just wanted you to have a little bit of background on what this information is, what we're reporting to parents, and how this matches up with our exit criteria. So.
It appears the parent's getting a lot more information.
Yeah, it tells you exactly what your student is able to do.
And this goes directly with the rubric that we already agreed on, that kind of outlines the competency skills that we want the student to. So it goes hand in hand with what we're doing all year long.
It matches up exactly. In fact, there's only a couple of things that are different. The teachers felt like it was important that the students knew their shapes, and they wanted to talk to parents about that. So they did add that. That's not on the exit criteria, but it is on the report card. But everything else is the same. So, you know, there had been some concern on Facebook, and I know Lois kind of addressed some of those, but we just wanted to make you aware of what was out there.
I've been to one elementary school faculty meeting, and I didn't hear anything but positive from that faculty meeting. So I think it's a matter of who you're speaking to and maybe understanding.
I think so.
Why the change happened. So Tim, did you have a comment?
Yes, well, I have a question on, on number three, just so I understand this. So we're doing number three, DRA. On that second semester, so what if they get seven and seven? Is that?
If they get a seven, yes, and a seven. The way the DRA is scored, it's scored, you get a two, you get a four, you get a six, you get an eight, there's not a seven there.
And same with, okay, so in the fourth quarter, that equals what, 30? So could they get 15 and 15, or those two, four, six, eight?
Yeah, again, they would, they would only get a 16 or a 14. That would be the split there, so.
So they have to have a three to pass, an eight to pass, a 16 to pass.
Correct. But the good thing about that is it's tied to that criteria that the teachers would then be able to explain to parents how they arrived at that score.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were talking about. Thank you.
Well, it's great for the teacher to be able to support why the student earned what they earned, instead of saying, well, I think, I think this, or in my opinion, the student can do this. You can actually prove.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's more objective than subjective.
Because if you look at the letter grades, sometimes there's no rationale for how they arrived at that grade. It was dependent on everything averaged together, so.
And this is consistent across our district, so not highly.
We started kindergarten, very same thing. First grade now is, looks like this. This summer, we'll pull that second grade group together, and we'll talk about report cards there, because we want to make sure, in putting this exit criteria together, that we have an exact match between what our expectations are and what we're reporting to parents.
And all buildings are using this?
Correct.
Okay, good. How many grades are we thinking of using this type of report card card?
We would like to go all the way up to sixth grade with that exit criteria. Now, what that grade card looks like, I can't tell you exactly, because it will depend on those teachers meeting and talking about what's the best way to report to parents, because we want something that's going to be very informational. You know, we talked about that at prior board meetings, that parent communication is probably the most important aspect of this whole process.
We did some new culture that we're establishing, and, you know, conferences are taking longer because of this, which is great, but it's so much more informational and so much more tangible, so.
Yeah, Jean. I just had a question. I can see where this would be helpful to the teachers in looking at a student, but I really think that report cards are meant to inform the parents of how their child is doing. And I think this is, is a little more complicated a method of doing that. Do they get one of these sort of informational sheets so they can compare it?
The teachers have that. I don't know if they share that with the parents or not, but I'm hoping that they, as they office with parents, they pull out everything they had that would go with that so that they could explain exactly how they arrived at a certain score.
Because unless we had a conference after each grade, after each grade card was sent home, I think the parents ought to be informed as they, they probably would like to be about how their child is doing it. It looks like they're just going to get a lot of yeses and nos, and maybe some numbers on these, and maybe not really have the information to interpret that without sitting down and going through this with their child's teacher. It seems like we need to do more contact with the parents to make sure that they understand and can interpret this in the same way that our teachers do. I just, I just would like to see it be as user-friendly for the parents as possible, because if we're tying them into assisting in their child's learning, you know, to just get yeses and nos and maybe some numbers, they might not know if their child is deficient or maybe they're excelling, and there's no way to know without that conference.
We're really hoping that that ongoing communication is taking place all year long. We know this isn't perfect, and we talked about that when we created it, that we will revisit this at the end of every year to see what went well, what changes we need to make. This is just the beginning of going to a standards-based reporting system, and we know that we'll have to make some changes, so.
Yeah.
That input is valuable.
So I hope that the parents out there talk to the teachers and say how this could be easier and how they might be able to get more out of it from what they would want to see.
And one of the mistakes we made is not putting parents on our committee. We already have one who's committed to being on our committee at the end of this year, so we're hoping that that will help also. So, good point.
I think having this extra sheet would be very helpful, because if you're going by your, if one parent goes to the conference.